Can we get a roll call? Commissioner Andretti?
Here.
Commissioner Seifert?
Here.
Commissioner Dickerson? Commissioner Pratt? Chair Hernandez?
Here.
That, we're going to move on to the public comment period. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to the discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed by me. Does anybody have a public comment that you'd like to make that is not related to any item on the agenda?
Correct.
Yes. Go ahead. If you can state your name and your address.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Donis Bagnole, and I am president of the Homeowners Association of the Estates at Pacific Crest. And for those of you who don't know who that might be, it's bounded by Western, Battles, and Sonia. So, we're out towards the western part of the city. And so, I'm here this evening kind of to give some feedback because our development is probably about 12, 10 to 12 years old now, and we're experiencing a lot of homeowners who would like to do some improvements to the exterior of their property in painting and that sort of thing. And so, one of the things that I'd like to impart this evening is the establishment of these homeowners associations and the ability of the board to manage and to enforce the CCNRs. So, our particular development does not have the ability to lean, and that was specifically left out of our CCNRs. Makes it very difficult to enforce CCNRs. And the reason is, is because we have to go through this arduous process of going to small claims court. So, we have to go through a lengthy process to go through a small claims court, which is time-consuming and expensive, and may not get the desired results that you want. So, in the future, if you do happen to come across some homeowners association that you want to start as part of a project, I would suggest that you provide that development with the lean capabilities. We have 292 homes. We have eight different styles and three different styles of those designs. So, we have quite a variety. It's a wonderfully thought-out, and I have to congratulate the commission and staff for this particular design. It's wonderfully laid-out. There's different variety of units. There's a parkway with a, you know, street tree, big enough to hold the tree, and it's just a wonderful laid-out development. Lots of cul-de-sacs. Makes it very appealing. But, it's become frustrating when we can't enforce the CCNR. So, we have a lot of different homeowners who want to do different things that are outside the CCNR. So, in the future, for projects that do come forward, I would suggest that the commission consider specifically putting in that provision for lean capabilities for the association. The other thing that I just wanted to mention briefly, I don't want to take up too much time, but in the future, you know, there's going to be, at times, droughts that may come in the future, I'm sure, as climate change occurs. And the design of the outsides of the units, the landscape design, it would be very helpful in the future, I think, if we take a closer look at the selection of trees, the selection of plant material, doing away with some of the items that use more water-like turf and that kind of thing. Maybe make a theme through the front yards with the landscaping, I think would be helpful. We're going through a process now where we've allowed, we've developed some guidelines and allowed people to remove turf and replace it with the plant material. And it's been, we've had several that have been done, and it's been very successful. So, I think in the future, that might be helpful for the outside design of some of the future units throughout the city and the developments. So, that's it. Those are the only comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your public comment.
Thank you.
That, we're going to move on to item number one, which is the development agreement for Winset Farms at 1650 Black Road. Staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This evening, we're going to be looking at the development agreement, actually, a replacement development agreement for Winset Farms. And since two of you weren't around when we did Winset Farms the first time, I had a few slides from another PowerPoint that I thought I would just show you a little bit about their operation before we get in and talk about the project itself. The Area 9, you've heard of before. It's an area with the Deani property up in this corner here, but a total of 890 acres with the Black surrounding area. And then, Winset Farms, initial purchase was 220 acres, which is encompassed by the Red area. The first three phases consisted of four greenhouses totaling around 5.8 million square feet, plus a very large processing facility in the center here, and corporate offices, things like that. They still had a remainder property in the back, and this is the area where last year you approved some of those temporary plastic hoop houses. And now, this has become, this whole area in the back and along the edge here is now being called Phase 4. And so, as part of the Phase 4, Winset has wanted to renew their development agreement so that it carries their agreements forward into this phase from the first three phases. Here's a better map showing the Phase 4 that you're going to be looking at. You're going to have a planned development coming in September that's going to cover the actual greenhouses and processing facilities for this, but right now, we needed to get out ahead with the development agreement, so that's why that's before you tonight. Here's a picture from their observation deck, looking over the roof line of the greenhouses. It's a huge, huge facility. And this is what they do really well. They grow tomatoes, and they've added in the last year or so cucumbers. They can turn out a lot of tomatoes. So, this is some of their beef steaks. Here's a cart that picks up the tomatoes that the pickers have done. They're all coded, barcoded, so that when they go through the scales, they can weigh and then give the credit to the employee that did the picking. Part of the development agreement that we had, the original development agreement, was to show that the Winset Farms was here in Santa Maria. And so, we have that on there, and that's one of the things that we're going to be carrying over in the next phase. So, some of the components that benefit Winset as part of this development agreement is that they would be able to continue deferral of construction of the required public improvements for Carmen Lane, Sonia Lane, Battles, and some of Black, and also deferral of a fiscal study and a fire station study for the first development in Area 9. This is a page out of the Area 9 specific plan, and the Winset property pretty much is this area here, down to here, and then back across. And as you can see, under normal circumstances, when you develop property, the municipal code says you also have to develop the roadways that are adjacent to your property. And so, that would have been this road and this road, E Street back here, and portions of Black. And so, as part of the development agreement, we said, "Well, we'll defer those construction plans until there's development that's occurring on the opposite side of the road." And that hasn't happened at this point, and so, and there's been no development over on this side of E Street, on the east side of it. So, they were allowed to continue deferring those. So, now that we're, you know, coming up with this new development agreement, the city agreed to roll over those requests. And then, the benefits to the city, the newer ones, are the first two on here, and that's improvement to Bederavia Road and Black Road within three years of occupancy clearance for this new Phase 4. And then, a payment of $700,000 to compensate for the deferred construction of those frontage improvements and the potential loss of industrial and manufacturing jobs is identified in the Area 9 plan. And then, there's a continued payment of $1 per hour, average more than minimum wage for their employees, continued provision of medical benefits for employees and contract employees, and then that continued advertising on the product packaging, which I showed. The next steps is if you move forward tonight, this project will then be considered by City Council on August 16th for the first reading of the ordinance. The second reading will be two weeks later, and then the effective date of the development agreement would be 30 days after the second reading. And so, the recommendation tonight is that you recommend council approve the development agreement and allow the project to move forward. So, any questions?
Any questions from the commission? Yes.
It just wouldn't make any sense to be putting streets in there at this time. I mean, so you're saying that the properties on the opposite sides are where Winset's?
Yes.
And there's no development plans for any of that?
None at this time. So, we just, we agreed to defer it. We've taken in a sufficient bond to cover for the improvements of the next segment that needs to go in, and that will be replaced in this new development agreement, so they'll continue on just like in the first one.
Thank you.
Do we have?
How is it that we emphasized or at least focused on just a dollar an hour above minimum wage? What is minimum wage at this point?
I don't know.
Like, 7.75 or something?
I think it's 8.75 or 9 something, yeah. But, it was just, it was something, see, when you set up a development agreement, you want to be able to scratch each other's back. And so, when we were looking for things that they could do for the city, one of the suggestions was that they pay the workers more than they'd be paid if they're in the, out in the fields.
Right. I was involved with this issue last time it came around. So, that's why, I know about it. Why, I just wondered why we relied or only asked for a dollar when our city has changed, we're losing potentially this manufacturing area. Why not $2 above minimum wage? Is that, was that discussed at all, or was that just something that was?
I don't recall there being any range discussed. I think it was just, on average, a dollar above what the adjacent field workers were making, which was minimum wage.
Well, I think the last time before us, we talked about what Maldonado was paying his workers, and that was kind of what we used as a reliable kind of a benchmark. So, I think he's paying his workers a little bit more than that now, so.
Well, and I know in this case, because of all of this monitoring they have for, like, how much product they pick, and because they use little flash cards when they go in, shows when they start picking, when they stop picking the rope, they can figure out how fast they're picking, how much they're picking. Those people actually earn more an hour, and some of them earn considerably more. So, you might want to ask them tonight about that.
Okay.
So, the average might actually be more than a dollar an hour, but that, they're all given the opportunity to pick faster, basically, and earn more money.
All right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, you have a question?
So, that's basically piecework, then?
I know they have to meet minimum hourly requirements, and then if the piecework goes above that, then I believe they get paid the higher rate.
Thank you.
Okay. If we can get the presentation from the applicant?
Good evening. Brian Schwartz, Urban Planning Concepts. I just have a few comments tonight, really, with regards to the development agreement. Before I do, I'd like to introduce from Winset Farms, Tony Martin and David Wesley. We also have other Winset employees and consultants here tonight, but I won't go through everybody. Essentially, this development agreement represents a collaboration, working collaboration between the city and Winset Farm to continue to expand their existing facility and to continue to grow their company here in the city of Santa Maria. The benefits of this development agreement really are substantial to both Winset Farms and to the city. And this development agreement provides the mechanism for the infrastructure to be placed in the logical place, at the right times, with the proper phasing mechanisms in place. So, as Steph pointed out, the first pieces of infrastructure that you will see are mostly going to be along Bederavia and Black, and that's where the traffic is right now. As Commissioner Seifert pointed out, it doesn't make sense right now to require the frontages adjacent to areas that are just completely undeveloped. So, that's the timing mechanism to place those infrastructure where it's most visible, most traveled, most used. And just a couple of things about Winset Farms. I think most of you know and are recognized, Winset Farms employs hundreds of people locally, full-time, year-round, with healthcare benefits. I'll let Tony Martin address the wages because he'll be able to speak to that better than I am, but they're a substantial contributor to the employment base here in the city. They're also recognized in agricultural technology, environmental sustainability, not just locally, nationally, but internationally as well. So, really, I just wanted to, on behalf of Winset Farms, thank the city for all the work, the collaboration that has gone into this agreement, and I hope that you'll approve the agreement tonight. Tony, would you like to address that?
Great. Can I ask a question, though, before we get to Tony?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, for me to do that. There was an agreement not to grow or cultivate marijuana, even if it may become legal to do so. Is that, is that a provision that was negotiated?
Would you like me to address that? Could you tell this?
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
The, on the question of marijuana, thank you, first of all.
Can we get your name again?
Oh, it's Tony Martin, and I'm the chief financial officer of Winset Farms. On the question of marijuana, interesting for us as a company, the only people that ever asked us about marijuana was the city. And the reason being is that we're vegetable farmers. We grow tomatoes, cucumbers, peppers, strawberries, eggplant. Our customers buy those products from us. If you look at the history of tobacco production, it's not the tobacco farmers who make money, it's the tobacco companies. The same will be true of marijuana. Marijuana will be grown, I suppose, by people interested in its production, and the people that, you know, the ones that will generate large revenues from it will be those that carry bonded services, like the liquor companies or the tobacco companies today that sell into that market. It's not going to be marijuana farmers. From our perspective, we've built these properties for the production of vegetables. That's our business plan. Our, you know, we don't have connection into a group or an industry that would seek that kind of product from us. So, we have no interest in growing marijuana. I think we were comfortable with the request of the city. We understand that, you know, if something should happen to Winset Farms and the facility was to sell, that they would want to have the opportunity to work with whomever, you know, bought that facility that may have other intentions for it. But as a company, we, at this time, have no interest, there's no desire to grow marijuana. With regards to the wage an hour, I'd be happy to address that. We currently pay, on average, for our farm labor, contract labor, it averages at about $1,250 an hour. The minimum would be a dollar an hour above minimum wage, which was our bond with the city. But some of our workers earn as much as $19 an hour. And there are piece-rated jobs, yes, some of them are. For that work that's not piece-rated, we actually, we actually pay the average of the piece-rate wage that the worker uses. Now, we collect about 100,000 crop registrations a week. That means we track every activity of the employee so that we can determine their wage appropriately and in accordance with the law. So, our workforce does very well from the perspective of the hourly workforce. On the salaried workers, the minimum salaried positions we have, I think, are in about the $42,000 a year range, increasing to about $48,000 a year range. But our salaries at Winset Farms go anywhere from above $48,000, and I think our top salary here in Santa Maria is about $300,000 a year. And we have a very generous healthcare program. Our employees, our full-time hourly employees are fully covered for, there's no copay. The insurance program reflects kind of the healthcare program we have up in Canada, where it's a fully funded plan by the company. In addition to that, they receive incentive compensation. Depending on the performance of the business, our employees can earn a bonus up to 50% of their base salaries. So, if somebody is earning $48,000 a year, they could generate a bonus for themselves up to $24,000. This year, bonuses ranged in about the 15% of salaries because that's how the company performed. So, retention has been exceptional. We've had very low turnover in the hourly staff and in the salaried staff, and I think we offer a very nice working condition for our employees. The break rooms are air-conditioned. They're, they're full of bathroom facilities. They have lunchrooms with microwaves and refrigeration, refrigerators. We offer breaks. We offer a health, a health plan for our farm labor workers. We make certain that they're covered. So, we see a low transition rate from them as well. Do you have any questions for Winset Farms, sir?
No. I thank you for explaining that to us, and I think that that's something that's important. We want to make sure that we have workers that can contribute to our community and to our, our growing city, because it seems to be growing more and more. But we, thank you very much for that explanation.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from the commissioners at this point? Do we have any written communication or public comment? Okay. And with that? Yes.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Commissioners, just wanted to add one thing. The agreement, there's one last detail that has to be worked out. If you have any questions about it, Hallie Holding can explain. It has to do with a private electrical utility or private electrical line that's needed to power the Phase 4 greenhouses that will be built. There's some, some issues that, from a legal perspective, will be solvable. Engineering practical difficulties still need to be worked out. We will either be entering into a separate agreement to deal with that, or it might be worked out and included in the development agreement that goes to the city council. It's not ready to be discussed, but I just wanted you to be aware of that. So, if you see the issue coming up at city council, you know that it's being worked on. It'll be worked on between now and then.
So, what are the physical problems that have come up?
Madam Commissioner and, Madam Chair and Commissioners, they are requesting that a private high-voltage electrical line be placed parallel to E Street, and in order to connect to the Phase 4 greenhouses, they would need to cross the dedicated easement for Carmen Lane. And typically, we don't necessarily allow electrical or any private easement across a public right-of-way without an agreement in place. So, we just need to work out details of the design to ensure everyone's comfortable with the location and the design of this, and that we have a recorded plan or document in place so that future references for buildings can locate it easily.
Okay.
Would that be above ground or below ground?
That's one of the details that we are currently working out. We have to coordinate with PG&E on what their recommendation for design is and what they will allow.
Because it would seem that, at least this commissioner, it would make more sense to have it go below ground.
One of the concerns there, it does make a lot of sense. One of the concerns is that we have an underground service alert, the USA, and so, when someone comes out to build a project, private utility doesn't get USA'd because they call PG&E, they call the gas company, they call, you know, cable and the phone company, but if it's a private utility, they don't necessarily know it's there or who to call, because public utilities all have locations that they go out and mark. So, that's one of the topics that we're discussing. Does it remain underground, or does it go up and over Carmen so that we can visibly see it? We have several design options. We have several underground options. We just want to make sure that we make a good choice for the community.
Do you have a timeline as to when this would be resolved?
We are hoping in the next two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yeah. We, we would like to get it resolved as soon as possible, obviously, but we would like to have something to bring in front of the city council. Either a separate agreement that we've negotiated so we can remove the language from the DA or the correct wording tied into the DA.
Okay.
And is the, the development agreement that we have before us, does that allow for inclusion of the subsequent agreements that you're making? I know that they're more specific, so.
Yeah, I actually drafted a acceptable provision that can be inserted, gave it to the Winset Farms people to look at tonight to get the ball rolling. This will not be a difficult issue to resolve as far as the agreement is concerned, which is why I'm comfortable recommending that you approve the agreement, as is to city council. This is a minor issue, a little bump in the road.
Okay. Do we, does the applicant want to make another statement? Okay. With that, can I get a motion for the resolution?
Are you closing the hearing?
I will be closing the hearing.
Mr. Seifert? I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2693, the development agreement for Winset Farms at 1650 Black Road, DA 2016-002.
I'll second that motion.
Can I get a roll call? Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Andretti?
Aye.
Chair Hernandez?
Aye.
With that, it's been approved. Thank you very much. Good luck. We're going to move on to item number two, which is a general plan, land use map and zoning map amendment and plan development permit for the street, for A Street deli at the southwest corner of West Bederavia Road and A Street. Staff, who can get your presentation?
Yes. Madam Chair, members of the commission, this is a general plan, land use map and zoning map amendment, as well as a negative declaration and a plan development permit for a project at the corner of Bederavia and A Street. It's a vacant site at this time in an industrial zoning district, and the applicant proposes to change the zoning and land use to commercial to put a retail building on the corner. The project applicant has a more comprehensive presentation, so I'm just going to go over the highlights and let them go into more of the details. But in general, tonight, we're asking for a recommendation on the negative declaration and on the land use map and zoning map change. The plan development permit would be continued to a future date following the council action on, on the legislative changes. With that, would like to have the applicant go forward and go through their presentation.
Okay. Can we get the applicant presentation? Thank you. If you can state your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Brian Tullio with Urban Planning Concepts, land use agent for the property owner of the proposed La Perla II deli on Bederavia and A Street. Thank you, Mr. Gilly, for that introduction, and we're at 2624 Air Park Drive in Santa As was stated, this property is about a half-acre site on the southwest corner of Bederavia Road and A Street, as shown on the slide. Next slide, please. Here we have the zoning that's in the area, the project site, and immediately adjacent site to the west with the M1 light industrial zoning. And then, to the south, and the west, and the northwest, we have the CM Commercial Manufacturing District. And to the northeast, Catty Corner, we have the single-family built-out residential area. And then, straight to the north, we have a rather large area of general commercial C2 zone property. And so, with the next slide, we just show this property going forth with the proposed rezone to C2 general commercial. And just, we wanted to just emphasize a few key points with the proposal, that this change to the C2 zoning is, kind of mimics the pattern we see in, especially in this part of town, where we have industrial zone properties on the back block or a couple blocks out from the major thoroughfare. the major thoroughfares with the corner and strip commercial zones providing those services easily accessible to the traveling public and also servicing the growing industrial park and commercial manufacturing park developments that are occurring in this part of the city with establishments such as Moxie Cafe on West McCoy, a sit-down restaurant that is really popular and serves that purpose for the visiting public and also a lot of the employees in the area. And also the recent loss of the golf course cafe food service sit-down that is on the A Street and the Air Park corner there. We think this would serve a demand that's lacking, and although this would not be a sit-down restaurant, it'd be a, you know, kind of a grab-and-go with freshly-made sandwiches, juice bar, and those things that I think would really enhance the uses in the site. And specifically, as the La Perla I, which is on North Blosser Road, also intended to serve the agricultural employees' needs for breakfast or lunch and food in the early morning hours before going to their jobs in the early mornings. So we have an opening time probably around 4:00, 4:30 in the morning, which is kind of a unique market they're going to be servicing in the city. Next slide, please. And so quickly, just a look at the site plan, which shows the about 4,400 square-foot building on the corner there with a substantial average 25-foot landscape buffer. You have the LID areas corridor through there and the parking lot on the western part of the site. And next, we have a couple of renderings of the building. We have the west elevation here showing the entrance from Bederavia Road and the parking lot and the main entrance to the structure itself. As you can see, it's a stucco-finished building with enhanced articulation features, including a stone veneer wrap and wooden trellises on all four sides, red tile over the main entrance, and large areas of glazing. Next slide, please. And here we see the street view from Bederavia Road of the building. And note that the landscaping has been removed from the rendering so you get a clear view of the building, but there will be substantial landscape plannings as we showed on the site plan. And so in summary, next slide, please. Just click through, please. Thanks. The proposed rezone would allow for the retail use as we described, and we think that the market deli would satisfy a demand that is up and coming and more and more responsive to the growth in the area for employees and the industrial commercial complexes. And we think the project design would enhance the local character of that corner and the actual visuals of the corner. And staff found no environmental impacts with the proposed project through the negative declaration process. So with that, we hope you agree with staff's recommendation to recommend the general plan amendment zone change to the City Council, and hopefully we'll be back before you in a couple of months with the full plan development permit. And we do have Mr. Gil Rodriguez, the architect for the project, if you have any questions for him. And we'd like to thank staff for today's presentation and helping us get to this point, especially Planner Bill Scott was very responsive on this project, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the Commission?
I do, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
What was your name again?
Brian Tetley.
I believe I spoke to you on the phone earlier today about this project.
No, you didn't.
Okay. I just-
Still a Brian.
I talked to a Brian from Urban Planning Concepts today.
We have three Bryans in the office, it gets really confusing.
Just wanted to make that clear. Could we go back to the traffic, the one showing Bederavia, the slide? I do only have one concern on this project, not that one. Yes. West Bederavia Road, this is an entrance? Are people going to be turning left as they're headed east? Because this is a very busy traffic area and semis go through there really quickly, and I was just wondering, are we planning on having people turn from Bederavia into this project?
Yeah, I mean, it's typical with corner lots, especially small corner lots, that turning movements become problematic with, you know, the near intersection, turn pockets and so forth, so the owner is aware. Currently, we're looking at a ride-in, ride-out only operation because we do have-
I would suggest, I mean, I work right down the block from this, and this is a, I mean, the semis, they don't slow down, so I would definitely consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Also, just following up on Commissioner Seifert, there may be a consideration for an at-grade grade driveway so that when somebody turns in there, that you move in fairly quickly, that work at the fast-food restaurant off the freeway on Main Street. But at any rate, so I would suggest that you consider that. This is not a drive-through, whether there's not going to be a drive-through, drive around this building or anything like that.
No drive-through.
Okay. I think it looks like a good project. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I would say if I could also comment, at this point, we haven't, we didn't present the details on the PD because that's at a later date, but the comments about the circulation are things that we are going to cover and have more information for you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Do we have any written communication or public comment on this project? No? Okay. Now, the applicant has spoken, but do they want to make a closing statement? No? Okay. And with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And ask for a motion for resolution?
I will go ahead. I'll go for that.
Okay.
I move that we resolve, or move that by Resolution 2694, that we recommend the City Council adopt a negative declaration regarding this property.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call. Commissioner Andrade?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Chair Hernandez?
Aye.
And secondly, I would move that we, by Resolution, recommend that the City Council approve the general plan use amendment and zoning map amendment at GPZ 2015-0005.
Can we get a roll call?
I would second that motion.
Commissioner Andrade?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Chair Hernandez?
Aye.
And then finally, I would move that we continue the plan development permit, PD 2015-0020 to September 17, 2016. Is that the date we want? Okay. Still want that date? All right. That would be my motion.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
See you. With that, we're going to move on to item number three, which is the Verizon Wireless Facility at Rotary Centennial Park, 2625 South College Drive. If we can get the staff presentation?
Yes. As noted in the staff report, there's a request to continue this item to August 17 in order to provide more information to the surrounding neighborhood about the proposal.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
I will move that we continue the plan development permit to PD 2016-0001 to August 17, 2016.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. With that, we will move on to the next item, which is other business. Do we have any reports on City Council actions?
I have a few things to report on. We had a pretty busy meeting last night. The main item was on the short-range transit plan, which has been prepared by the Public Works Engineering Division along with the Transportation Division. The bottom line to that is that they were recommending a 25-cent fare increase, which was the first time, I think, since 2005 or something, was it longer? But it's been a long time since they had an increase in fare, and so they did that. They also reorganized some of their routes to try to make them more efficient. Second one was the discussion with the C3H Organization on Deliverables for Homeless Services, and they put together a matrix of things that they say they're going to be doing, and they'll be coming back periodically now to show how they're performing. Another item was consideration to increase the stipends for Planning Commission and the Wreck and Parks Commission. This was an item that Councilmember Boyzen had suggested. He was thinking you guys were overworked and underpaid, and we all believe that, but we did study, and as it turns out, Santa Maria is very well-paid at $75 a meeting. Lompoc, Planning Commissioners volunteer. San Luis gets $60 a meeting, and Santa Barbara was going without pay for three years during the recession, and now they're back to getting $50 a meeting. The Wreck and Parks Commission, again, Santa Maria pays $75, and all the other commissions are volunteer. So we had a little discussion, and then it was pretty much decided that, well, thank you for your service, and we're going to leave it the way it is for now. So that was kind of interesting. And then the last item was the Downtown Revitalization Committee, as you recall, you've already voted a member, and so has the Wreck and Parks. Last night, the mayor recommended two councilmembers, both Councilmember Boyzen and Waterfield, and so they will both be part of that group. So that was it for the meeting.
Thank you.
All right. With the assistance of legal counsel, need to note that when Commissioner Andrade raised the question about the date and the continuance of being certain, I checked, and that September date was actually an incorrect date.
Well-
Thank you for bringing it up.
We approved the motion.
Can we just state for the record that it will be the second meeting in September, which is the 21st, not the 17th?
Not to be overly technical, but the proper thing would be to bring a motion to reconsider and then do a new motion, but that does seem kind of technical. Can we just treat it as a clerical error?
I'm willing to remake the motion.
Okay, then let's do it the technically correct way.
Yes.
So we would move to reopen, this is item number two. Item number two.
Item number three.
The third.
Oh, I got you, yes.
And so we reconsider continuing the plan development permit to September-
21st.
21st, as opposed to the 17th, 2016. That would be my motion.
I'd second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. With that, we're going to move on to item number five, the oral reports from the Planning Commission and staff. Do you have any oral reports, Mr. Gilly?
I'm sorry, that was basically my oral report.
Okay. Any other oral reports from the Commission? No? With that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.